All this meeting's ordered. Pardon everybody, it's uh. Hopefully have a nice day after the air change, it's actually not raining. Good to see everybody. So today we have with us Nick Gill from Morphy, good to see you Nick. You'd like to first the podium and tell us about what's going on?
Uh, thank you Commissioner. Okay. Thank you. Happy here to present some information from the Menno High Regional Planning Commission, Morphy. My name is Nick Gill, I'm Transportation Director of Morphy. And what I'm here to talk about today is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Uh, first of all, about Morphy is where we are, we're a regional council for 15 counties, Central Ohio region, serving more than 2.4 million people and our membership is now in the urban and rural and suburban areas of the region. We focus on various topics that basically cross jurisdictional lines. The area of transportation, which is the focus I'm here today about, but also in terms of economic development, work with our communities on that, working on planning, sustainability, you know, air quality issues, water issues. We're also a great resource for data, census data, other types of data, we're sort of your resource or your place to go if you want data about the region, about your community. In Franklin County, we also offer residential services for low-income households in terms of weatherization and home rea have. And we're also always keeping track of what's happening at the State House up in Columbus as well as in Washington DC to keep track of what laws are coming, being considered and policies are being considered and advocate on behalf of our members for what's in the best interest of Central Ohio. And then when we, our communication and engagement is always, you know, getting our message out, keeping our members informed, keeping the public informed of the various issues and topics that we're working on. So, you know, along with those eight member governments we work with, we also work with nonprofits and the business community as well to sort of work to make Central Ohio the best place it can be. Uh, you know, one of the things is, you know, where a region is growing, this is a graph and hopefully it's not unfamiliar to you with regards to, you know, how the 15 county region has been growing over the last, you know, four decades or so. I've been at Morphy since the early 90s and I've been part of seeing this steady continued growth for Central Ohio and predicting to, estimating to continue that through the year 2050, become a 15 county region of more than 3.15 billion folks. Uh, and that's 720,000 or so more people than live in that 15 county region today. Almost 300,000 more households to be built between now and the year 2050 and more than 350,000 jobs to support that population for our region. Now, you know, the next step that we do look at is okay, where is that growth occurring? And there is a map of 10 counties, Central Ohio area, not the full 15, but 10 county and where that growth of the households is occurring, you know, basically, you know, all over the region. We're not a region with a big lake or a big river that sort of hems us in and then so we can go grow in kind of all directions. Um, you know, the map on the left is where the most dense households will be grown, a lot in the, everywhere, a lot in Delaware County, you know, Fairfield County here, as well as still in the, in the core of Franklin County and the city of Columbus, of adding additional households and population to the region. Uh, the map on the right on the right is sort of the resulting density of the region. You still see lots of rural areas, especially in those outlying counties, lots of rural areas and suburban areas with the most dense areas still being the heart of Franklin County, the city of Columbus and some of those areas, you know. And then when it comes to jobs, you know, where is that growth going to occur? Uh, those 350,000 jobs that I mentioned that's growing in the region, you know, where does that going to occur? Once again, is where the growth is going to be, the darker colors being more, more jobs growth over the next 25 years. And then on the right, sort of the resulting densities, you can see that's still all our major transportation corridors, our, you know, our core communities throughout the region and in Franklin County, along with right here in Fairfield County. But I'm focused on my reason I'm here today is our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It's the, the long-range plan for the Metropolitan Plan Organization area looking out 20-plus years. And as you know, I keep talking about Morphy as serving a 15 county region, one thing I meant to do back on that first slide was the NPO area, that's where the federally designated Metropolitan Plan Organization area is Franklin County and Fairfield County are just five little blue township. However, we do provide transportation planning services through the Central Ohio Rural Plan Organization that covers the balance of Fairfield County along with the six other counties that kind of form the C around Franklin and Delaware County. You know, so what's here is talk about our core NPO responsibilities for that Columbus urbanized area, which is really just focused on by the blue township here in Fairfield County. But the MTP is processed every four years to update it. We update it because things change, our regions grow, our transportation needs change and adjust, and there's a lot of federal dollars, transportation dollars that flow into the region and to be eligible for those federal transportation dollars, projects must be part of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Um, the balance of CorpO is covered by, or balance of Franklin County as mentioned is covered by CorpO. Uh, it has its own transportation plan, actually we just completed that process in the fall and they have a plan that covers that as well. Um, our Metropolitan Transportation Plan is first, a few years ago, we adopted these goals, it was similar goals to the plans we've had, patches, finer adjustments. These goals are around creating sustainable neighborhoods throughout our region, increasing collaboration, making sure we're maximizing the return of our investment of transportation dollars, and continue to provide and support that Central Ohio has economic growth and prosperity. And make sure we're providing these transportation services that serve all people and first foremost, make it a safe transportation system. And while implementing our transportation system needs, that we do it such a way that we protect and enhance our natural environment and reduce energy consumption. So how do we go about putting together the MTP? It's not just us and our offices going in, we actually start with what all the communities have already done. You know, most communities have a thorough plan or a comprehensive plan or at least a capital improvement program that identifies what they see as a transportation need within their community. You know, we start with those, we pull all those together, we identify all the transportation projects and needs that you've done in those things, pull those together. We use those, that population point forecast that showed earlier to do analysis on our own of where we see bottlenecks occurring or issues occurring, you know, out through the year 2050 and identify projects and needs through there. Uh, we put all this together about a year ago into an interactive map that we had up on our website, allows people to comment on, on the projects, identify new projects. Almost 200 new projects were drawn in by the community and the public during that process of the different additional things that they see that we need for our region and should be considered for inclusion in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Uh, it was more than a thousand specific projects to expand our transportation system that was identified and we went through a project, a process of evaluating those projects and identifying which ones could be included. The document itself, I talked about projects there, it's in the sort of the back at once that it's about strategies of what we want to do for the region. There's the goals that we have, we have particular performance measures related to those goals, but the heart of the plan, sometimes I think of it as these strategies of first, maintaining what we have, managing what we have, making sure we keep our system in good physical condition, our roads, our bridges, our transit fleets, our sidewalks, bike lanes, make sure they're in good physical condition. Make sure we're doing what we can to maximize the efficiency of those systems, you know, using technology to, to, to help alleviate congestion and make the system operate as efficiently as possible. And we're going ways to reduce the demand, addressing those most congested peak times of the day to, to help by taking some of those vehicles off the road to manage the congestion. And then as mentioned, we're kind of first and foremost, making sure it's a safe system, one of the strategies that'll make our system safer, reducing crashes, especially those crashes that are a result of the tallies and serious injuries, with an increase sense this on always vulnerable road users, those that are biking and walking on our system. But we are a growing region, we have been a growing region and we know there's, there's bottlenecks in our system, our gaps in our system. So that's where we get to the system development project, strategies, you know, what types of products that we need to expand our transportation system. And we're talking about all in complete modes. Our bike pedestrian system is a focus area there because all of the street in this system is generally, you know, is interconnected. Uh, back three and four decades ago, they weren't thinking as much about making sure there's sidewalks and you can walk and bike everywhere as we, as we do now, that's a changing preference. So, you know, there's lots of gaps in the bike pedestrian system, so, you know, fill in those gaps, making it as interconnected as a street, sorry for vehicles, is a, is a strategy in our, a variety of strategies in our plan. The transit system, you know, Fairfield County has a transit system, CODA is the bulk of the transit system for the urbanized area, Delaware County has transit system, but it can be more, more robust than we are right now. So how can we make those more, more robust as strategies? You know, how can we help make sure we make it a good environment for our freight system, for our trucks, for our intermodal connections? And the roadways, it's still a backbone of moving people around transportation system, you know, where are those bottlenecks, where are those new connections needed? Uh, where are those, maybe just, you know, additional lanes or maybe it's just some intersection improvements and so forth to help, you know, once again, sort of maximize that efficiency of, of our system. So where we are right now is we put together a draft transportation plan. Here we go. Uh, more than $35 billion of resources expected to flow into the region from all, from all areas, from federal sources, state sources, local dollars to do that. You know, there was, you know, more than a thousand different projects identified to expand our transportation system, they all can't be included because it'd usually be a physical constraint, you know, with resources, so. And looking at that, what we see here is a big jump, quarter of the funding level right is with regard to maintaining what we have, making sure it's in good physical condition, making sure we can maximize efficiency of those. The biggest jump here though is, in the region, is to make transit much, much more robust than it is right now. Also, almost $2 billion to standalone bike and pedestrian projects to fill in those gaps in our bike and pedestrian systems throughout, throughout the region, as well as improvements to our car rail system, to the freeway system and interchanges throughout. Specifically with regard to transit, um, the link that's initiative, that's partnership of us, CODA, City of Columbus and Franklin County to implement high-capacity rapid transit along various corridors in our region. BRT stands for Best Rapid Transit, which is the mode in, in three corridors, West Cross Street, East Main and Northwest Corridor, our own tangent here, Road Out to Dublin. They're in, between 30 and 60% design right now, is working through those out. Uh, our, our transportation plan identifies that we can have five corridors built by 2015 in our, in our financial forecast at the moment. So, uh, looking at two additional corridors to start the study like those first three were like three years ago. So it's identified downtown to airport, east and then beyond is one corridor and then a corridor to the south. Likely more the first, the next corridor to start the detailed study would be going down from downtown down towards the Rick and Baker area into the transit center that CODA is building there right off 317. Uh, in addition, uh, we know the job centers throughout the region, especially in the north as well. ODOT did a study centered around intel on the Potash and township area and identified needs to add more east-west there. So we're looking at additional studies of corridors there as well as other areas of the region, you know, out towards Hilliard, up towards the city of Delaware, as additional needs to see where, you know, urban transit, high-capacity transit can help serve our other needs. Besides these corridors, there's projected to be a 45% increase in transit service throughout the region, that is increased frequency on existing routes, expanding coverage and making service, you know, 24 hours on some routes throughout the CODA system. Zooming specifically into the NPO area of Delaware County, these are some of the projects, those dotted lines are some new roads, the thick red lines are widening, add additional through lanes on, on some roads, wreaths or some bike and pedestrian, still standalone projects and yellows would be some minor widening type of activity where you're adding center turn lane or adding turn lane at various intersections. So a variety of stuff happening, that's always been the case down in, in violent wood township, city of Pickerton area. So these are some of the projects specifically to the NPO portion of Fairfield County. As I mentioned, CorpO, I don't have the map of that, but CorpO updated their plan in the fall, which adds additional projects throughout the, the balance of Fairfield County, but that's sort of a different topic than what I was here today for. So, uh, at this point, I only got a couple more slides, I'll just pause on this map for a moment, manage to apply to sort of the wrap up on where we are, where we take the next step. So I'll pause here and open up for questions or any, any comments that anyone may have.
Can you talk about the connector for a minute?
The 3370 connector? Yeah, it's, uh, obviously it's something that's, you know, been talked about for, you know, maybe a decade now and in terms of we've done some initial studies of that for the, actually the Fairfield County Kids sort of leading some of those activities with Bill Oger. It was on the last plan as a, as a connection to there, 3370, we're maintaining it as well, sort of goes outside the NPO area just a bit there and sort of line it, but it's still a concept, there's only been some initial studies done, there's, uh, there's definitely the, you know, discussion of it, I think, for what can move forward and then just going to have to take up, take a lead and sort of start to move it forward in a little more detail. You know, us as Morphy, we're sort of, we're collaborative, we're bringing people together, we have to bring people together, help move some of these projects along, but this is sort of the list, it's, you know, we're not an agency that can help, help implement any of these projects here, but it's, uh, you know, they're going to sort of take that, you know, a big thing is for this particular one from my involvement passes, you know, what type of facility does it need to be, you know, how would you, you pay for it and fund it is a, is a, a lot of the big hurdles as well as just the ability, just the, you know, going through a major facility, going through, you know, what is now a rural area always is a, a concern, building something, something like this. Uh, but definitely as aware of the needs, reasons it's, it's here of, of vehicles, trucks in particular, seeing the stories of coming up and trying to get to the, and the Potash developments of going through county and township roads that's not designed for trucks and they're getting stuck and off-road and everything, uh, because that's just where the GPS tells them to go, that's not where they should be, they need to stay on those higher-class facilities and freeways, work around.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis, I mean.
No, thank you.
You're at my, do you have any questions?
I don't, I actually had the pleasure of seeing this presentation last week, week before.
Couple of times, yeah.
Yep, yep, so I appreciate you coming down and sharing.
I have a question. Uh, so I know ODOT's doing the study for the 721 to 37, the 71 study and it's a pretty broad area. How is that study going to then reflect on what this connector wrote? Like, how are those two mentioned together?
I'd say at this point, they aren't necessarily mentioned, I mean, I think what she's referring to is ODOT District 5 as they're just in the very beginning stages of starting study of, uh, from I-70 up to our 161, basically from the Franklin County line to Thornwood Boulevard, basically the edge of Hebron, E area, of looking at what they can do in sort of short to medium term to improve north-south connections through there, with a focus really on the existing routes, things like 310, things like Mink, things like Thornwood Boulevard, uh, things like 37, you know, corridor area. So really looking at where are there, uh, spot improvements and bottlenecks to look at and improve, and improve those to alleviate, to help facilitate travel between, that's what's moved from 70 up to the 161 area, because of the route there. So, I think it's, they're kind of, they're being, because they're not really looking at necessarily in their study of like a, a brand-new corridor connection here and so forth. And I think O's, uh, over the years have sort of evolved and especially at the township area has evolved, you can see this connection, we have it pointing conceptually to go to the 310 interchange, not some potential new, new location on I-70's new interchange, I think that's kind of, uh, been talked about and it's kind of over time become less feasible and less possible there. So I think they can be really independent because this would sort of connect up to the 310 area as opposed to some, you know, new corridor that might be up there that we want, high to center.
Thank you.
This presentation available?
Yeah, all the information is on our website and the county has it and they can share it as well, but our draft plan is on our website. Uh, we had it, well, we talked about all this, uh, here, we had an open house on March 19th with various displays and so forth and all those materials are on there and there is an interactive map still on our website where you can zoom into the area and look at the various projects and so forth.
It'll be posted with or non-existent, so you can see.
Uh, just can't go to your website and see the information, there's much more detail we even want to show here.
Thank you.
So, uh, I said we spent more than a two-year process getting to where we are, identifying the goals, identifying projects, evaluating projects, getting to the draft plan. Uh, so we had an open house on March 19th, displays, information's up on our website. We're working on, and we've come out to meetings like this, county commissioner meetings, village and city council meetings, council committee meetings, and the city of Columbus have been going through all their, many of their area commission meetings as well to give them information, to get feedback on the plan and on the projects. And we've been in the process of incorporating those into our, the final MTP. We're in the process of wrapping that up over the next week or so and will be going through our committee's process in May for adoption. That concludes everything I have.
Thanks Nick.
Thank you Nick. And so I'm sure you have a busy day, so you don't necessarily have to stay for the remainder of our meeting if you put your, sort of, in bar.
Okay, thank you very much, I probably will at least get out.
Before we get into public comment, Commissioner Ficks would like to say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, for my five-plus years of being a commissioner, pretty much every week, Ray and Judy Steeman have come and spoken to us and, so I don't know that there's anything that Judy has ever said that I've agreed with. And then I can say, you know, I think for the three of us, her presentation style, kind of older than now and condescending, is definitely not appreciated. The fact that she and Ray take their citizenship responsibilities as seriously as they do is something that I respect, even though I don't agree with them. I respect that they show up week after week after week and make comments on whatever it is they want to talk about. Uh, Judy's in hospice care, we just learned that yesterday afternoon, so don't know that she's ever going to have an opportunity to stand at that podium again. Won't miss, you know, being scorned, but I wish more people took their responsibilities as citizens as seriously as Ray and Judy do. So I just wanted to, to recognize that. Also, I know that there's a lot of folks here who probably want to talk about the solar situation, we've talked over the past several weeks about, you know, what kind of map we want. Uh, later today, we're gonna show this map and it's all 13 townships with no restrictions. So any of you who are here to encourage us to not have any restrictions, certainly welcome to still come and speak, but know that we're already moving in that direction.
Sorry, you saying no restrictions, I think you mean no exceptions.
No exceptions, yes, sorry. Yes, thank you. So that's it, thank you.
So, uh, at this, at this particular time, we set aside time for public comment. Uh, if you wish to do so, please approach the podium, give your name and address and it is limited to three minutes, please. Who would like to be first?
Morning Commissioners and staff. My name is Jeff Williamson and I live at 1201 Mining Oak Drive, Baltimore, and actually in the incorporated township of Pinkfield. Today I'm going to depart from my normal stance on the emotional part of solar and I wanted to start focusing on, actually be more on the economics. I found some data from Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory regarding the backlog of solar projects waiting to enter the grid known as Q. They have found that at the end of 2023, there was a total of 1,080 gigawatts of solar capacity sitting in the interconnection queue national. Ohio power distribution is managed by PJN, as many here are well aware, and as of 12 of 23, PJN had a total of 150 gigawatts of solar in Q. Now I ask you, does this make any sense to build more solar capacity when we are not even using what we have? How green is that? I would suggest the real green is dollars. Solar companies are popping up everywhere because federal government passed the so-called Inflation Reduction Act. Have you noticed how inflation has been reduced? I haven't. Inflation Reduction Act is a lie and it really had a Green New Deal as the name, it's truly a Green New Deal with the name that was easier for Congress to jam down our throats. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, please?
Morning. My name is Selena McCord and I'm at 8640 Rafner Road in Miller's Court and I wanted to first thank all of you for all the hard work that you do every week, just considering details for our county. I'm amazed and impressed, so I thank you for the hard work, but, and I also appreciate the time that we get to speak, but I've gotten to share my thoughts about the general concerns of the solar industry plan and, uh, basically I just wanted to encourage everyone about the agriculture in the county and options that farmers do have. I found an article published April 4th of 2024 that the Ohio Department of Agriculture is able to announce 139 more acres added to the farmland preservation program in 2024. Um, the Ohio Department of Agriculture wants farmland to remain Ohio farmland because they know it's a key part of Ohio's landscape. The ODA has created an incentive in agriculture easement and farmland preservation, it's a voluntary agreement between the landowner and ODA where the landowner agrees to maintain land predominantly in agriculture use. In exchange, they either get compensated or they may be entitled to a tax deduction. So there is an option for farmers that are struggling in this time and since the Office of Farmland Preservation began in 1998, 711 farms, totaling 1,005, 997 acres have entered into agreement with this. So this enables Ohio to continually be a top producer, aiding not just Ohioans but all Americans and funds of these purchases and easements, of these easements are invested into the local community by the farmers that receive them. I also just did some research on the Ohio Census of Agriculture in 2022, that's the most recent one. For Fairfield County, 84% of the farmland in Ohio, in use in Ohio are cropland and 4.8% is pastureland, 6.3% is woodland and 4.7% for other and 96% of these family farms are family farms, which also highlights that many families and communities are thriving in the county. Out of 88 counties in Ohio producing Out of 88 counties in Ohio producing items, we are at a rank of fourth. So we are definitely, um, participating in our state and in our country. And in comparison to the survey done in 2017 from 2022, cropland in Ohio farmland has increased from 81% to 84%, and the family farms increased from 95% to 96%. So as you can see, oh, sure, thank you. And so I just wanted to, um, just remind that we are thriving as a county, a state, and we're contributing in America, which is important, and we know that this is the staple of Ohio. So I thank you for your time.
Jerry Klimer, 3464 South Bank Road, Wallen Township. Of course, my subject is solar. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the map that has no carve-out. I appreciate that. However, since Eastern Cotton Tail, which is our main project, which is all of this pink, all of that pink area is Eastern Cotton Tail, nearly 2,300 acres. And it's, we've got, oh, I guess I better turn it right side up. Thurston, Pleasantville, and Millersport up here. It's basically on both sides of Thurston, um, one of the huge parcels is adjacent to the city limits of Pleasantville, which could have been developed if they're going to develop it residentially. That would be a perfect spot for it, but it's leased for solar. So we still have a fight on our hands as far as going to OPSB and, and making sure that this project is denied. Uh, I'm just gonna basically read real quickly. Where people choose to live can have a profound effect on their health and well-being. There is nothing like the sights of farmland. This is a letter that the county commissioners have received last year, and it says, "We have farmed this land for 60 years. We paid our real estate taxes, we kept our farm mode, we farmed our land with regard to the land and our neighboring farmers. My husband," I'm gonna keep names out of it, "my husband was born and raised on this land. We have only ever made our living here. We bought the home place in 1975, and then the surrounding farms and the families who owned them came to us when they were ready to sell." So they bought up additional farmland. "We raised our kids here and taught them how to work for a living. Caring for this land and enjoying just seeing the crops thrive each year made us treat the land for what it was, our home, our income, and our relaxation in the evenings when we enjoyed a ride back to the old railroad track, which has become a solid driveway for us." And then the rest of the letter goes on to other things and why. It's all about the money. These people leased their land to solar. Once you break that cycle in the family, it's not going back to farmland, and we're gonna be receiving, hopefully by next Tuesday, a report considering the farmland itself, the soils in the area, and it's from that perspective rather than a geological perspective that the, um, the former report, uh, that you guys had made. Anyway, so I'm hoping that next week we'll have that report. Thank you.
Think anyone else?
Good morning. Stephanie Taylor, Habitat for Humanity in Southeast Ohio. I just wanted to give an update on the two projects that we are, um, months away from wrapping up here in Lancaster and Fairfield County. So the first one is, uh, 325 and 6th Avenue. That is our 150th home as an organization, and if you haven't been by, it's almost done. So we are hopefully weeks away from wrapping that one up. I know the family's really excited, and we're really pumped to get that one underway and, uh, on to the next. But, uh, the other one that's been going on a little bit longer has been the partnership with the Fairfield Career Center, and that home, uh, permits are almost done with the city of Lancaster. We were out last week with the trucking company that will move that home for us. Uh, we went and sold the lot, made sure they're good with getting it where it's gonna go, and that's gonna be on Army Avenue. Um, if anybody's been out there, it's a little tight, so I'm really just seeing how this truck is going down and then getting back out of that area. Um, so we're, uh, staking that lot out this week and hopefully getting foundation in soon, and within the next few months, that will be the next home that will be finished. That makes number five and six here in Lancaster and Fairfield County in the last three years. Um, and then we will quickly be moving on to Grass Street, our second home with, and that will be a community build, um, and then our second home with the Career Center. Both will start in the fall, uh, so that'll be seven and eight. So we are really excited, and if anybody again is ever looking to get involved, we never have a shortage of ways to do that. So you know where to find me. I'm here most Tuesdays, but I'd love to talk to you, grab coffee, or whatever else if you'd like to learn more about what we're doing. But we're excited, and we love that this county and the city and all of you have been involved in multiple ways, so thank you.
Anyone else, please?
Good morning. Beverly Sturm, 1556 Raffinell Road, Lockhorn, Ohio. Let's spare you the long speech I had prepared. So thank you, Commissioner Fix, for letting us know that you've included all of the exclusionary zones with no exceptions. I'm here because I'm speaking on behalf of all my friends and relatives, since similar to Commissioner Lipinski, I'm related to have Fairfield County. But, um, I wanted to thank you on behalf of my 94-year-old Uncle Mulder Bader, who has been a farmer in Fairfield County his whole life, and my 92-year-old Aunt Rita Ricketts, who is involved in the county government by being mayor of Hickington. And I also wanted to thank you for the future of Fairfield County. Um, my 28-year-old niece, who recently moved from Columbus down to Fairfield County, back to her home, so she could be a farmer. So on behalf of all the farmers in Fairfield County and all the residents, I want to thank you for, um, supporting agriculture in Fairfield County as you did in the 2022, um, report on Fairfield Growing. So thank you very much.
Who would like to be next, please?
Uh, Jerry Starner, 9440 West Bull Road, just real quick, uh, thanks for all the work you're doing on this, and, uh, sorry to hear about Judy. The, uh, title of goal is meant to educate, help educate others with this whole solar package. That's my great website. So really, my offer is, I don't know what we can do as citizens to help you in all of this, but more than willing to do whatever it takes. And I'd also like to say, I'm really kind of disappointed in myself that attending these meetings, it's amazing what I've learned, uh, everything, from regional planning to you name it. And so I hope maybe once I retire, if you get a way to come work more, uh, I can come attend these, who knows, you know, any, any help I can provide, I'm happy to, and I'm sure there's no question. So thank you.
And you're always able to watch online.
You will, that's certain. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next, please? By once, twice, et cetera. Thank you for coming. Anything, anything I'll like?
Briefly, uh, Commissioner Fix has already mentioned it, but that resolution to begin the process for the review of the maps and for posting them around the county is in today's agenda.
Thank you. Honey, welcome back.
Thank you. All right, we can review. Uh, the April 30th Board of Commissioners meeting is an evening meeting at Wagner's Memorial. Thanks to them for, uh, allowing us to have our meeting there. It'll be at 7:00 PM that evening. Also wanted to share that, um, Jeff Porter, uh, was nationally recognized for his work with our, uh, Health Benefits Plan, uh, specifically our employee physical and mental health clinics. Um, I was at the, yeah, let's clap. Okay, we can do that. Um, so, uh, Jeff was recognized at the Ohio Public Employees Labor Relations Association earlier this year in January, and his nomination was forwarded on to the national level. Uh, so it is a competitive process, and he was selected as their one and only case setter. Um, unfortunately, Jeff was back here holding down the fort, um, but, uh, happy to be able to see that recognition. NFP, um, was the nomination, uh, wrote the nomination for that, and they will be sharing that information with their client base as well. Anything you want to add? Congratulations, Jeff, and all of the HR team and everybody that works very hard to make our benefits, um, uh, program, uh, cost-effective and work well for our staff. The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. We have 31 resolutions on the agenda for the voting meeting today. Just a couple of note, we already talked about, uh, the resolution to establish a public hearing to consider the designation of restricted areas, uh, of large solar facilities. We also have a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Agriculture to resolve situations where existing right-of-way or easement needs expanded for public, public safety purposes and permanent agricultural easements. Tony, you want to add anything to that? All right, thank you for your work on that, Tony. We also have a resolution authorizing a data sharing and confidentiality agreement between ODJFS and Local Area 20 to further the overall workforce mission. And just as a reminder, Area 20 does consist of the JFS agencies in Fairfield, Pickaway, Ross, Benton, and Hocking. We have eight resolutions for service agreements between JFS and network placement providers, a resolution authorizing a repayment extension, uh, for the Public Children Services epic grant, and then lastly, a resolution to approve the purchase of two additional Motorola dispatch consoles for the 911 dispatch center for direct integration with the State of Ohio Mark's radio system. Budget review, Bert?
Well, thanks this week.
All right, thank you. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. Lancaster Fairfield Committee Action Agencies Board of Directors Meeting is April 18th at 11:30. The Family and Children First Executive Committee has a meeting April 19th at 8:30 AM at the Record Center. The Ohio Attorney General's Elder Abuse Commission Meeting is April 22nd at 10:00 AM at the State Library of Ohio. And the Governor's Office of Workforce Transformation Public Benefits Review Committee Meeting is April 22nd at 2:00 PM. The location for that meeting is yet to be determined. Commissioners receive the following correspondence: A letter from Fairfield Homes regarding the Reserve 100 frames and affordable housing for seniors; The Fairfield County Municipal Court, Mark 2024 Criminal Traffic Division, B Report; A press release from the Office of the Fairfield County Recorder titled Protecting Ohio Veterans; Fairfield County Recorder Lisa McKenzie Cautions Veterans to Be Aware of Exploitive Practices; A press release from Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit titled Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit Transitions to County Departments Launches Public Outreach for Transit Development Plan; Report of Ohio Indigent Defense Study Task Force; Correspondence Regarding Industrial Solar Projects; A release from the Office of the County Auditor titled Cigarette Dealer's License Deadline Approaching; A memo from Dr. Carrie Brown regarding cigarette license deadline, tax incentive review council meetings, and a Board of Virginia update; The Fairfield County Auditor's Wins of the Week; and a letter from AEP Ohio regarding a construction notice of a transmission tidelines project. That is it.
Any old business, Commissioner Davis?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah, just, you know, so we're clear, um, I'm supporting the, the ban on solar in the 13 townships in large part because I see, you know, all the work that we did on the land use plan and the future development that's coming to Fairfield County. I see where that land is more valuable potentially as being developed into commercial or residential property. So, um, also, you know, feel like we as commissioners do, uh, a great deal of work to support the agricultural community. And just, I guess, want to say be careful what you wish for, right? We're, we're working to make it so that this doesn't become solar fields, they become neighborhoods, they become warehouses, they become light industrial. So, um, the future is always gonna be changing, as, you know, we heard from the Morpse U this morning. Um, there's a lot of things coming our way. We're doing everything we can to prepare for it. So this is step in that process, but process is gonna continue. So just want to make sure we're, we're all clear on that. Thank you.
The last, uh, last Thursday evening, Commissioner Fix and myself, we attended the 4H Awards Bank, which is, uh, at the fairgrounds, and it's always very encouraging to myself and I'm sure that Commissioner Fix and others, uh, all the young people and their projects and how well they do with their accomplishments. So when you look at those young people, it really encourages each and every one of us for the future of our, not just Fairfield County, but our, uh, 4H does such wonderful work in that regard, and very, very important. Some new business, Commissioner Davis?
Thank you.
So, uh, earlier, um, Holly, anything you'd like to?
I just want to give an update on the model zoning code. Thanks to Commissioner Fix, we now have, um, all the, the townships that are unzoned participating. Um, we have one that's, we're, you know, waiting on to hear from, it had some urgency issues, so, but we've increased the number of townships participating now, and we have all the villages participating, so very excited.
So it's going very well.
Yeah, I mean, as far as participation, and we're gonna kick it off, kick the meeting off, kick the project off with a meeting, uh, next week, so.
So we're, uh, we're rolling out of winter time now into spring, and, and we're getting ready for, uh, construction season. So we're starting to stock up on pipe and, and materials, things like that, getting the crews squared away from what our spring and summer, fall plans will be. Uh, we also started to stop the topsoil and, uh, doing some of the underground work for our salt farm. Um, so we're getting that going while we're preparing bid documents, getting that ready to go. Other than that, we're spending, spending some time with the, uh, Boswell Western Project, Refugee Route Project, and then a handful of other projects, uh, throughout the county.
Through the Refugee and, and Refuge Road project, how's that been going?
Currently, the intersections are under construction. Um, it's been a slow process, uh, the, uh, so one of the, one of the items that's a big part of an intersection are the, the mast poles for the lights and so on and so forth. And still, it's been challenging for the contractor to get the steel for those and get them made. So that set us back a little bit, but they are under construction now. We just expect to have that done by, by early to midsummer. I'm ready to help you.
I saw that the mast poles are up at Refugee and Harmon, so I know that progress is being made.
Yep, yep.
Good, that, uh, that is much needed.
I, it's gonna make a big improvement there. We're not, I mean, we're not planning on stopping there. We're gonna continue to move forward with what the next phase of that, that corridor looks like and, and we're gonna push.
Morning. The first half settlement property taxes came in at 7.5 mine milling, which is about 55% of our total estimate, which is right on track where the estimate should be. So that estimate is 13.6 million. So we're right on track with that. It's a good thing to report at this point in time, given that it's twice a year that we click those. I have seen some new faces in the courthouse yesterday. There were folks from Athens County here reviewing all of our payroll procedures because they're re-tamping theirs, and they'll be returning to get more information about good practices that they can use as they think about things like the municipal tax withholding and other, um, types of payroll processes. I attended the Killer Market, um, open house last week and just like to reflect on the land bank and how that was a really good, um, project of the land bank that became such a good, you know, community gem, and it is continuing to improve. The Tax and Senate Revert, uh, Review Council Meetings have been set with the exception of Penna Winchester, which we will tie along with Franklin County when we get that particular date. Budget Commission should be able to continue with the waiver of the formal hearings. We're getting the information that we need in order to make recommendations for rates. I will say that I attended a meeting with the State Library to get more information about the library distributions, and there are some uncertainties about that, so that may- so that may require a formal meeting. Just as we think about changes in physical assets, we're thinking about changes in processes, thinking about short-term changes that can have long-term benefits. And that is the topic of a presentation that I have been invited to. I'm conducting the Government Finance Officers Association National Conference this spring. And I am considering joining the peer review group.
You mentioned State Library. I'm on this elder abuse occasionally, and that's where we meet.
Folks there, when you're not.
Yeah, it's a pretty interesting place, actually. Tony?
I just want to thank the GIS department, Nick Dilly. They helped me make some apps that.
Anthony?
I'm not. So I am sitting in for our direction. I'm Anthony I T D, economic development coordinator of our Economic Development Department here with the county.
Can you use your hands when you talk a little bit?
I'm late.
He's watching.
Yeah, he's actually meeting with Senator Schaefer right now on a capital budget request for planning. Plan under affordability, so he sent me instead. I have a quick update on our summer camp signups going on. First one is from county. It's going to be going on all summer in robotics, healthcare, engineering. Getting middle school students involved in some of these different careers early. And we're expecting a bigger turnout than last year. So a lot of interest around the county of that. And developing product. Can you give a word with Jeremiah in the Engineering Department on all of the projects going on?
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. In the IT department, I've been touring different departments and elected offices, having, attempting to have business data discussions where we talk about what's out there, what's important, what needs to be protected. And so I just wanted to say a thank you to those that I've met with already, and there are more to come, certainly. But it's been worth our while for those to study this.
Holly?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who attended last week's Child Abuse Prevention Breakfast. I was very well-attended. And we honored Phyllis Schenk, a foster parent, with the Partner for Kids Award. Phyllis and her husband Russ have fostered over 400 children in Fairfield County. Phyllis recently passed away earlier this year. So there were a number of her family members there for that award presentation. So it was really a great moment. I'm sure everybody who attended would agree with that. But it's hard to imagine a life better lived than somebody who's impacted that many lives, so. Also, wanted to introduce Ethan Jones, who's here with us today. He's our new musical specialist. Been with us for a couple of months now. I was going to put him on the spot.
Did he tell you or required to give a speech?
I'm happy to be introduced.
Better than that. Welcome to the team.
Please provide a creative word. I mean, the budget link is. I look at the Super Wild Eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which she stands, one nation, under one individual, who will receive and possess this world.
There are no announcements.
Purple minutes for April 9th, 2020. So moved. Discussion. Any other roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Minutes past 3:0. From the Commissioners, Resolution 2024-4.16.a. A resolution to approve establishing a public hearing to consider the designation of restricted areas which prohibit the construction of large solar facilities in Fairfield County, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
And I think, you know, we've discussed it already in old business that why we're doing this and why we're moving forward with it. Seems like it's the right thing to do when you look 20, 30, 40 years down the road for Fairfield County. So I'm happy to support this effort.
Additional discussion? Roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Levacey.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 2:0. Resolution 2024-4.16.b. A resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Agriculture to efficiently resolve situations where an existing right-of-way or easement may need to be expanded for public safety purposes and permanent agricultural easements.
Our Commissioners, I move items B, C, and D.
Discussion.
So this first one that was referenced in our review session, the MOU between Fairfield County and the Ohio Department of Agriculture. Basically, you know, where we are is that in the, there are certain situations where a farmer wants to preserve their land in perpetuity, and we support that. But what's happened is that when their entire property is preserved, that cuts off our ability to do any kind of development down the road from them, right? If we can't run pipes, if we can't get right away to run pipes or do other things on the edge of their property, that prevents their neighbor from being able to do what they want with their property. And so this MOU basically just makes it easier for that leader that wants to preserve their property and the county to work together to preserve their neighbor's rights long term.
Additional discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2024-4.16.e. A resolution to authorize the approval of a data sharing and confidentiality agreement between ODJFS and Local Area.
So moved.
Discussion. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From the Fairfield County Engineer, Resolution 2024-4.16.f. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category fund 2024 motor vehicle repairs and maintenance.
New Fairfield County Engineer, I move items F, G, H, I, J, and K.
Discussion. Seeing that roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024-4.16.l. A resolution to approve a memo expense memo receipt for the cost of birth certificates paid at Fairfield County Health Department as a memo expenditure for Fund 2072 Public Children's Services.
New Job and Family Services, I move items L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, and W.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2024-4.16.x. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for juvenile court fund 2630 special projects.
New Juvenile Probate Court, I move items X, Y, and Z.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution 2024-4.16.a.a. A resolution to approve the purchase of two additional Motorola dispatch consoles for the Sheriff's Office 911 Dispatch.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. From Fairfield County Utilities, Resolution 2024-4.16.b.b. A resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category for utilities for 5044 contractual services.
New Utilities, I move items B, B, C, C, and D, D.
Second. Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024-4.16.e.e. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Levacey?
Yes.
Motion passes 3:0. The next regular meeting is scheduled for April 23rd at 9:00.
So we had scheduled a executive session for at 10:50. We get that now, which we're aware of outside of people attending. Okay, all right. Make motion, we win the executive session to discuss the personal issues. But in that session, I'd like to have the Commissioners any district or county prepared or disruption prosecutor's office, insurance office, outside council.
Second. Second part.
All right, roll call, please?
Commissioner Fix?
Yeah.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacey?
Yes. So we'll be in executive session. After executive session, we intend on going back into review and then adjourned. We don't expect any new business that. Yeah, normally we don't do this, Sherri, but go ahead.
Turning back to what Commissioner Fix said about, what we wish for, about the development and everything else. Solar does not require rezoning. All of the development is with public input and zoning. And that's the huge difference between. So we have control over that.
Understood. Any additional on the county board board committee? Thank you.